This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Participating remotely to remain muted until recognized by the city council president. Also, for the members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in the public speak time or in the public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Mary Ann?
Connie Denham?
Here.
Felicia Jazak?
Here.
JP Kuzinski?
Here.
Tom Peak?
Here.
Brad Riley?
Here.
Tamara Smith?
Here.
JT Terrell?
We have a quorum. Excellent. At this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence and ask everyone to reflect on how we can become a city that is the best we can be, the most civil, the most working, willingness to work and listen to other people that we can possibly have. I thank you. At this time, we'll rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will work my best to achieve. At this time, we have the high privilege of inviting the mayor to the podium. And Mary Ann, would you please take the honors?
Start here or there?
I would defer to your judgment in this call, whoever you'd like. That's great.
I can't see. I state your name.
I solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially
I will faithfully and impartially
discharge and perform
Discharge and perform.
All duties incumbent upon me
All duties incumbent upon me
as mayor of the city of East Hampton
As mayor of the city of East Hampton.
According to the best of my knowledge and abilities
According to the best of my knowledge and abilities.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution of the United States of America
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the city of East Hampton.
The city of East Hampton.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Sam, do you have any words you can bear to give at this time, or are we going to wait for the mayor to speak? Also, very unusual in November, but I would like to call Jonathan Schmidt up at this time. Jonathan ran for councillor at large and received the most votes for the position and now has the opportunity to serve as of certification. Mary Ann?
I state your name.
I, Jonathan Schmidt.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially
That I will faithfully and impartially
discharge and perform
Discharge and perform.
All duties incumbent upon me
All duties incumbent upon me
as city councillor at large
As city councillor at large.
According to the best of my knowledge and abilities
According to the best of my knowledge and abilities.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution of the United States of America
Of the Constitution of the United States of America.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the city of East Hampton.
And the city of East Hampton.
Congratulations, Councilor.
Jonathan?
We do Jonathan. We have a formal duty here. And that is to formally sign in.
Thank you.
Thank you. And here, I have something for you. And you may
Pick a seat.
Right next door.
Where you want to go.
Yes, I'm sorry. You're going over there. That's right. Thank you.
Pick a seat, any seat.
We have the privilege of inviting back one of the councillors who is currently serving and was elected by the council to serve until the election. And at this time, I would invite councillor Jazak, Jazak, to be here for precinct one.
Two.
Two, two, two. I apologize. Yeah, yeah. I am so excited that you're back, that precinct two, and you were elected without opposition. Thank you.
So raise your hand, please, and be after me. I state your name. I, Felicia Jazak, do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially, that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform, discharge and perform all duties incumbent upon me, all duties incumbent upon me as precinct two city councillor, as precinct two city councillor according to the best of my knowledge and abilities, according to the best of my knowledge and abilities agreeably to the rules and regulations, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution of the United States of America, of the Constitution of the United States of America the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the city of East Hampton, and the city of East Hampton. Congratulations, Mayor.
At this time, we have an additional councillor to bring aboard, and that is councillor Amanda Newton. I would invite you forward, who was successful in her bid to precinct four. Congratulations. Mary Ann?
I apologize for the delay. So raise your hand, please, and be after me, please. I state your name. I, Amanda Newton. Do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially, that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform, discharge and perform all duties incumbent upon me, all duties incumbent upon me as precinct four city councillor, as precinct four city councillor according to the best of my knowledge and abilities, according to the best of my knowledge and abilities agreeably to the rules and regulations, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution of the United States of America, of the Constitution of the United States of America the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the city of East Hampton, and the city of East Hampton. Congratulations.
That's all good.
It's absolutely not unusual, really.
Yeah. Every meeting, you have to shake everybody's hand.
And sign in, so.
That's like a sports game.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Whoops.
Pick a seat.
Congratulations, one and all. Thank you very much. We're so excited to have you join us. At this time, we have our minutes from October 8th. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Here, a second. Thank you. We're all good here? Is there any discussion on the matter? None? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstaining. We have Jonathan and Amanda. So now you're formerly councillor Schmidt and councillor Newton. My apologies. Thank you. Motion passes. We're moving on to public comment. At this time, you have the opportunity to address the council for any matter that is not on the agenda or on for the public hearings. You have up to two minutes to speak on whatever matters that may be on your mind. At 6:15, however, we have the public hearings. So at 6:15, we have announced the public hearings. They're published, and we will break from public speak to the public hearings, finish the public hearings, come back. Anyone online who cares to speak, you would certainly be welcome to join at that time. Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Kayla Crowe.
An address?
140 Lovefield Street in East Hampton.
Thank you. And you have up to two minutes.
Um, my concern, so, um, there was a new park, um, like, um, a new park, oh, this is so stressful, sorry.
It's okay.
You're okay.
It's like public, like, super public. Okay, sorry. Um, a new park
It's okay.
bench was there, um, and I just wanted to kind of like understand if, oh, I'm so sorry, um, if there's any, um, plan on maintaining, um, like, privacy, um, for my home, and it's like, like, it's like right across the street from the newly installed bench. Um, so I just wanted to understand if there was potentially any plans for that. I, I have already spoken to the Manhan Trail Committee as well on Monday, um, and they had mentioned to come to you all, so I just wanted to put that in there as a plug, um, to figure out how that can be addressed in that capacity.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I will announce, and I should have said this sooner, that we do not respond immediately to anyone, anyone's particular comments. Otherwise, uh, that would might be a violation of open meeting law.
No, that's fine.
So you're welcome to bring the topics to us. We will, I would ask you to either contact the clerk's office and leave your name. I'd be happy to contact you, or you're welcome to coun, to speak with any of the councillors here at the table.
Thank you.
So feel free to stop in or call. Mine, I'll give you my number if you're interested. 575-6009. So feel free to use that.
I appreciate your time.
And I will announce that, uh, depending on how short your, your, your time is, we only will have time for you or one other person.
All right, I'll try to be brief. Um, I want to say congratulations, or, I am Jim Marvin Quaid, H. Jones Drive, uh, city councillor elect. Uh, I want to say congratulations to the councillors that got sworn in tonight. I look forward to serving the community together on that side of the podium in January. Um, I also want to thank the councillors for the resolution supportive, uh, workers' collective bargaining rights. I really hope that it passes unanimously tonight. Um, and last but not least, uh, I want to speak to the concerning development regarding the mayor's office in the overhaul of the executive assistant position. Uh, since the election, I was really happy for the opportunity the city had for both Salem and Lindsay to work together in the mayor's office. We would have gotten the best of Salem's creativity from his years on council, matched with the best of Lindsay's experience getting things done within the city. And I'm really disappointed to hear this wouldn't be the case. I'm also really troubled to hear the executive assistant role is being replaced with a clerical position. Beyond the serious personal impact this has on a public servant and working mother who's dedicated nearly a decade to the community, this also hurts our city's institutional knowledge and capacity in the mayor's office. Lindsay did a lot of critical work all these years, and removing that position will only hinder our city in solving the challenges ahead. I also think this will make it harder for our mayor to be more responsive and accessible to the community more broadly if he's taking on more administrative tasks formerly well handled by a professional. I totally understand and respect that the mayor should be surrounded by a team that helps them feel supported and do their best, even if that's not, um, Lindsay. But I think that removing department leadership capacity will do the opposite. As Lindsay had planned to do if she won, it would make sense to redetermine the needs of the position based on the skills and the needs of the sitting mayor and to negotiate a fair reduction in compensation and responsibilities alongside that. I don't think this heavy-handed approach is warranted, especially when we are literally weeks from the election. I won't assume Mayor Derby's intentions behind this, and I think we all benefit from assuming the best of each other, but this makes that challenging for me, if I'm being honest. I think this sends a really bad message regardless of the original intent.
Fifteen seconds.
It looks like a disregard and dismissal of the critical work that Lindsay has done for the last seven years. I've also had multiple people reach out to me personally to express similar feelings, um, since the exact article was published yesterday, which is why I felt the need to express this publicly. I truly want Mayor Derby, Mayor Derby to be successful, and I want to be able to work together in the best interests of the community, but that includes disagreeing when I see choices being made that I feel will harm their community. I really hope that those who can will push back on this and, um, we can find a, a good resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. And this brings to 6:15 the time for the public hearing, and so I apologize to anybody who would like to speak right now. There will be time to speak afterwards. I would, uh, at this time, entertain a motion to open the public hearings.
So moved.
Second?
Second. Motion in a second to open the public hearings. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The hearings are now open. Councillor Peak, do you have any comments regarding tax classification?
Sure.
Something we have to do
Yes.
and is important, and we're glad that it's coming in a timely fashion.
Yes. So we met with Martha, our principal assessor, uh, the finance committee did, did a few weeks back, and we went over, uh, the options that are available to us for, uh, sort of, uh, when it comes to tax classification. Uh, broadly, for the whole time that I've been on the council, we've gone by, with one, uh, approach, and the main reason for that is that a lot of the other alternative options that are set out don't necessarily make, uh, a lot of sense in the opinion of the board of assessors, the principal assessor, or the finance committee. Uh, they don't necessarily make a ton of sense, uh, for East Hampton, given our particular property mixture and size and whatnot. So Martha will be able to explain that, I think. I think she has a presentation prepared. But, um, but basically, the, the short version of it is that we are, we are not recommending any changes to what we've been doing for the past few years. So
So we're good.
The process will be that we'll hear from our principal assessor
Just, uh, one moment.
and be able to ask questions at that time.
I do have a presentation. I just don't have my IT crutch with me.
Need help, Sam?
Yeah.
Is she a co-host?
I'm going to make her a co-host.
Uh-huh.
Um, yeah, I lost it. I mean, it's up.
So if you can get out of this for a sec, and then if you can log in as a host, so as, um, I participate on this community. Um, sorry.
I did join, but, um,
This is a special meeting, sorry. I thought you were on vacation.
Sorry, it'll take one second. Sorry.
No, it's not your fault. It's because we had meetings tonight.
Yes.
All right.
One second, almost there.
All right, now make your co-host, and then you can go.
Okay. Here, and here, and up here. Where's yours? Right here? And then right here? And then here? And then here? And then I share? Perfect.
Oh. Oh, success.
And then I come back here? What is it? And I want all of it? Is that good? I'm, it's not.
This is one thing I do know.
Oh, I don't want that either.
We're all going to take turns coming up there and doing something. Yeah, I wasn't, it's flashing here, but not this way.
I just had to press light here, I think so. Can we get my face up there, too?
Don't tell us. You can, you, your camera.
Are you just trying to?
Yeah.
Can you go back to your presentation?
I know how to do this on Zoom.
Go back to the, like, uh, get out of this. I don't know why it's not showing. I didn't want you to. It was showing earlier, because I practiced multiple times.
People will still be able to see it.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak it anyway. Wrong way. That's my head. All right. No. I don't know. All right. Okay. Now, why is it, it's not up there? All right, I'm just gonna, just gonna speak it. Okay, we're here for the tax classification. I'm Martha Lee Me. I am the principal assessor. And, um, the purpose of the tax classification is that before the tax rate can be set, city council must hold a mandatory annual public hearing required by Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, to consider the tax rate options available to the municipality under property tax classification. This hearing is held after assessors have determined final values and classified all properties and reported this information to the Department of Revenue. These values set the parameter the city may adopt. The main goal is to vote on a residential factor and other local options that determine the percentage of total property tax levy each property class will bear for fiscal '26. This hearing does not determine the total amount of money to be raised, nor does it decide the tax rate for the city. Um, many of the figures were used from FY '25 because we don't have our complete picture of FY '26. There are five classes of property for tax allocation purposes. There's the residential class one, which is single families, multifamily, condos, apartments, even non-owner occupied properties are still taxed at the residential rate. Open space is land maintained in open and natural condition, and very few communities classify property as open space. East Hampton has no properties classified as open space. Commercial is class three, industrials, class four, manufacturing, processing, and utility real estate, and personal property for anybody who owns a business, it's the tangible items not firmly attached to land or buildings, such as machinery, tools, merchandise, furnishings, equipment, et cetera. And that would be for businesses of most legal structures. And, um, the common grouping is the class three, four, and five, known as the CIP, commercial, industrial, and personal property. This would be a good one to see. Uh, we have to submit to the state what's called an assessment classification detailed report, which is an LA four. For FY '26, it breaks down every property class. There are multiple classes for the residential, from single-family condominiums, trailer homes, properties with ADUs, which would be considered multiple houses on one lot, multifamily, uh, four or more. And that's the largest class. East Hampton's total taxable value for FY '26 was just over $2.6 billion. The average single-family home value, which is property class 101, for FY '26 was $418,545. This is an increase of $26,930 from last year's average single-family value of $391,615. And I will say that most single-family homes will see an increase of 7% in their assessment. Why do we change values every year? We are required to. Under the guidelines established by the Department of Revenue and Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59, assessors must assess property at 100% full and fair cash value. The annual adjustment serves two main purposes: to accurately reflect market conditions, what properties are selling for, and to ensure the equitable distribution of the tax burden among property owners within the community. To achieve this, we continuously review sales, inspect properties to maintain accurate records. These visits are called cyclical inspections and are required by the Mass. Department of Revenue, with all property interiors and exteriors inspected at least once every 10 years. And while assessors are mandated to attempt to get in, homeowners do not have to let us in. They can say no. Additionally, new construction, additions, or significant alterations to existing properties necessitate a review and re-inspection to accurately reflect their impact on market value. These regular evaluations, combined with the cyclical inspection program, form a comprehensive approach to maintaining accurate and equitable property assessments through East Hampton. There's a chart to show the calculation for a single tax rate, which is basically simplified to the total amount to be raised minus estimated receipts. You get the tax levy. You divide that by the total valuation. You get a tax rate for last year was .01367, times 1,000, 1367 was the tax rate for FY '25. Now the meat. Local option one, the single rate versus the split rate. City council must decide on a residential factor. They can decide on a single rate, which would be a residential factor of one, where all classes of property, residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property pay the same tax rate. And for this year, our residential makeup is 88% of the levy, and the CIP makes up 12%. Or city council can vote to reduce the percentage of the tax levy paid by residential property owners. The difference is shifted to the CIP class resulting in two different tax rates, a lower one for residential and a higher one for CIP. The maximum shift is limited by the minimum residential factor, or MRF, which ensures residential properties pay at least 65% of their full, fair, full and fair cash value share of the levy. CIP cannot pay more than 150% of their full and fair cash value of the levy. The total levy stays the same, and East Hampton has historically chosen a single tax rate. Uh, I'll just break down this chart. Do you guys see the chart? You don't see the chart? Okay, so with a residential factor of one, we had the 88% for residential, and CIP percentage was 12%, which led us to a 1367 across-the-board tax rate. Um, in various scenarios, the maximum would be a residential factor of .93, with a CIP factor of the 150%. That changes the levy to 82%. The percentage of levy for residents is 82%, raising the commercial-industrial percentage of the levy to 18%, which led to a tax rate, which would have led to a tax rate for residences of $1,274 and $20.50 for commercial. Using the maximum shift, the average single-family assessment from last year of $391,615 lowered the value, the tax bill, lowered the tax bill $364, and with an average commercial-industrial assessment of $602,611, it increased the commercial-industrial tax bill by $4,116. The next local option would be the residential exemption, and this shifts the tax burden within the residential class, class one. City council may adopt a residential exemption for all residential properties that are the principal resident of the taxpayer. The exemption cannot exceed 35% of the average assessed value of all residential properties. This fixed dollar amount is exempted from the value of all owner-occupied principal residences. It is intended for a taxpayer's principal residence, not for vacation homes, investment properties, or higher-valued homes. The impact would be lower-valued owner-occupied homes would see a tax reduction. The tax burden would then be shifted to owners of residential properties, vacation homes, and higher-valued homes. The majority of residential properties in East Hampton are owner-occupied, and shifting the burden to rental properties could potentially lead property owners to pass the increase on to tenants. And these residential exemptions are usually adopted in larger cities and towns with a high percentage of non-owner occupied rental properties, like Boston Brookline, et cetera, and then many resort communities like the Cape and the Islands. And lastly, the small commercial exemption. This would provide an exemption of up to 10% of the property valuation for commercial class Class 3 properties. In order to qualify, a property must be occupied by a business that has an assessed value of less than $1 million, has an annual average employment of no more than 10 people, and if the parcel is occupied by multiple commercial occupants, all occupants must be eligible. Adopting this exemption increases the commercial-industrial tax rates. The higher rate creates a shift that reduces the taxes paid by owners of properties occupied by small businesses and shifts them to larger commercial and industrial taxpayers. This does not change the total taxation for commercial properties, and it does not benefit the small business. It would only benefit the owner of the real estate. And communities that have a large commercial population like Auburn, Avon, Bellingham, Berlin, Braintree have adopted the residential exemption. The assessor's recommendation for this year's classification hearing is to adopt a single rate or a residential factor of 1. The board recommends against adopting a residential exemption, and they also recommend against adopting a small commercial exemption. Thank you. Questions? Brett.
Counselor Riley.
Thank you for that. So, first thing that I wanted to ask, I know we had some technical difficulties with the presentation. Would you be able to forward this on to, say, the city council president to share with the new councilors who were just sworn in tonight? And then also for the new ones who will be coming in a couple of months? I think it would be helpful to kind of contextualize what it is that we're talking about.
Yes, and it will be on the assessor's website.
Perfect. Okay, great. And then, you know, so the question that I have for you is, in my recollection, we have adopted the single rate of 1 as long as I've been a city councillor. Do you see anything on the horizon where we might need to reconsider that in the future? Are there any sort of things that, you know, might start to come, you know, out of balance or, you know, that we would have to think about, you know, doing one of these exemptions?
For the split rate that usually works in communities that have a large commercial-industrial base, ours is 12% of our total levy. It's cities like Westfield, Holyoke, Springfield. Residential exemption, again, the majority of our properties are owner-occupied, are residential, so that sounds like it would be helpful, but it would also raise the taxes for our higher-valued homes. And my thought would be if people pay a higher rate for their higher-priced home, they might sell their property to move to a community that does not have a residential exemption. We don't have, I mean, we have multifamilies, we have large complexes, but we don't have enough where that would make a huge difference.
Okay.
And the small commercial exemption, I think, would be great, but it doesn't benefit the business itself, only the property owner.
Right.
So, coming down the line, unless we have a bunch of properties come in or a bunch of businesses come in, then maybe a split rate, but at this point, it's pretty, it wouldn't really make sense.
Okay.
It's just best to have a split tax rate and hope sales come down.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Counselor New.
Is it okay? So, for the residential exemption, is that like a complete 100% exemption, or can we make it a smaller percentage?
You can go up to 35% of, and so that fixed amount would come off. It's not 100%. There are exemptions, which, there might be another time. There are senior exemptions that help the taxpayer, veteran exemptions if you're a disabled veteran of 10% or more. But the residential exemption, it really is in communities that have a large rental or vacation home population.
Do we have the veteran exemption and the senior?
We do. I'd be happy to go over that if you ever want to stop by the office.
But it's already in place.
It's already in place. It's a separate exemption that the state, you can adopt various income levels, age limits, but it is across-the-board offered in every community here. Just it varies the amounts town by town.
Could we raise that, or?
JP and I will be looking at some of the other, there are local options within those exemptions that we can look at. We've adopted, you know, increasing the senior exemption from 500 to 1,000, lowering the age for seniors from 70 to 65. Veteran exemption is pretty much, there is one that is in the works, which could exempt, there's various, not prices, amounts that get exempted. So, if you are a disabled veteran with 10% or more but not 100%, you would get $400 off your taxes, and you can raise that to up to 100%. So, you could get $800 and use a COLA. There are two separate recent with the HEROES Act local options. You can adopt one or the other or both together. So, I know the veterans' agent was looking into it.
And so, who, sorry for the question, but who decides who raises, like, whether the senior exemption or the veteran exemption gets raised to the maximum?
If I might interrupt for a moment. The matter at hand is not the senior exemption or the other.
No, you're right.
So, I would like to focus the conversation on what we have before us, since we can discuss the other options later. They are in addition to what is currently, what's on the table tonight is
Strictly classification of split rate.
The tax classification and the split rate.
I'd be happy to discuss that with you.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry to interrupt.
It's okay.
Please continue if you had other questions.
No, that's all.
Okay, great. Any other questions from the councilors? At this time, I would open this up to the public. Anyone in the audience here who has any comments or thoughts on the tax classification matter? Don't all raise your hands at once. Okay. Seeing none, I turn to the online group and offer the opportunity to weigh in on the subject. Anyone online? Please raise your hand, and you will be called on. Not seeing anyone. On the online, you're not too late. Please come to the podium.
Are we outside?
No, no. We have someone who rose here, and you're entitled to.
Probably not the right place. Carl Proll, 22 Gaston, just had a quick question, trying to do some back-of-the-napkin math. This was a $27,000 increase of the average home value, which, again, my math skills are not strong, but that's working out to an increase of $850 average property tax. And the last two years going, our social security increase, COLA increase, has been $50 or $600. So, this increase is entirely going to eat into our seniors' COLA increases plus some. And I'm not saying it's under the purview to dictate the law. I know this is, you know, the parliamentarian decides how we do this, apparently, but I hope we're keeping that in mind, that this 15% increase in property values is going to price many people out who have fixed incomes in our community. Thank you.
Anyone else? Before I invite anyone else, principal assessor, would you care to comment on this, on the subject?
The percentage pretty much across the board is 7%. There is some variations. If you improved your property, then on top of the 7%. And there's a lot of factors: style, square footage, outbuildings, extra features. So, not everybody's property will be exactly the same. But I do would love people to come into the office or call, and I'd be happy to explain. I think there's a lot of misinformation, and as I said, this is something we have to do. It has nothing to do with our budget. It has nothing to do with Proposition 2 1/2. It's solely based on sales. So, just for some background, for FY '26, we're a year behind. We're using calendar year 2024 sales. So, the market, if you're paying attention, which I know everybody is, it's been crazy. I think things have started to slow down a little, but we, I get asked, why did this sell for so much? Why did this sell for so much? These are valid sales, and the state wants to know, why did a property sell for well over the assessed value? I call Realtors, and these are valid sales, but people are finding alternate financing to put a down payment to pay cash. So, they are flush with, well, not flush with cash, unless you're from Boston or California, which has been a problem. But they are paying cash offers well over ask just to get into a home, and that's a valid sale. We can't, they're called coded out. So, if it's a family sale, or there's personal property involved, we can code those sales out so they don't count, but the sales, the assessment-to-sales ratio keep falling every year, so we have to bump it back up. And it's unfortunate. It's the aspect of my job I do not like, but I do really like talking to the taxpayers when they come in and have a question. So, I really encourage people to come in. Do not rely on Facebook for your information. Come to the source, please. I'm happy to explain as best I can, because that's all I can do. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
So, we're here tonight to discuss the tax classification, not the tax rate. My understanding was the rate is typically set?
The rate will happen after. So, you have to decide what factor you want to use. If a factor of 1, which has been standard, then it stays with a split tax rate. I haven't been able to get where we might be at with our tax rate right now. Not all the information is in, we submit everything to Gateway, and it's not all in there, so I can't get an idea. I think we still have to include our debt exclusion. So, it's up to the city council to decide on the
On this matter first.
Yeah. Residential exemption, and then the small business exemption. So, I'm sorry, I know we got a little off, but I kind of expected that. These are, these are not good times.
You're all, you're all good questions. Anyone else from the audience or online? Last call? Seeing none? I would invite the councilors, if they have any final questions on the matter. Nope. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Sure. I would move that the city council adopt the Board of Assessors' recommendations of residential factor of 1, no residential exemption, and no small commercial exemption.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt a single classification. Is there any further discussion? Seeing that this has been the way the matters have proceeded in the past, also that our city is not at a point where we have a commercial base or an industrial base sufficient to support a change at this time. Typically, I believe most communities look to 25% or 26% as a minimal amount of other types of property before they shift a burden to those properties. And so, at this time, I'm certainly in favor of this motion. I'm seeing no other discussion. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Motion passes. Counselor Peak.
Okay, so, the next item that we have up is a request to adopt Mass. General Law, Chapter 200A, Section 9A, is amended by Section 65 of Chapter 188 of the Acts of 2010, which is an alternative procedure for managing abandoned funds or unclaimed checks or tailings. So, I think Mayor Derby or somebody from his staff might have some more to say on this, but before he does, largely, this would streamline the process of what happens if the city writes a check to an individual or an organization and, for an extended amount of time, it goes unclaimed. The current process is sort of, it's difficult. So, this is an alternative way of handling this that the state has made available to cities. The city council reviewed this proposal and voted to recommend it 3 to 0. The City Council Finance Committee voted to recommend this 3 to 0.
Mayor Derby?
Thank you. So, I had no idea what tailings were until I became interim mayor, and our treasurer, who is really great, brought it to my attention that we have a significant number of checks that have gone out that never got cashed. And if we want to try to get people that money, we have to go through a process where we advertise that. And if you've ever seen on a check void after 180 days, which is a pretty standard thing, this would be those checks that have been voided that the city had issued. So, maybe 20 years ago, I misplaced a city council check and never found it. So, this would allow the city to advertise that that check is outstanding, and that starts a clock. And that clock would then allow us, within that time period, I think, I believe it's a year, if nobody responds to that, then all of that money can go back into the general fund. And so, then we don't have outstanding liabilities that we're not sure if these checks are going to cash or. So, this was something that was brought to our attention by our treasurer, who was paying close attention, tidying up our books, and it made a lot of sense to bring it forward.
Any questions for the mayor? Seeing none. I looked at this and met with the treasurer, met with the mayor, and certainly it seemed to me that it was the prudent way to proceed because the city is in a much better position to help to get the funds to anyone who may feel that they have funds outstanding, monies owed them, and it enabled the city to take steps toward that matter, towards that return of the funds. If the funds aren't collected, again, we're able to go ahead and balance the books, put the books, everything back in order, because otherwise you're carrying liabilities that just, they're not going to be liabilities anymore. So, that can get cleared up after the year. We can start the clock by moving this forward. Not seeing any other questions or further discussion on the matter? I would entertain a motion. Yes, we have.
Public. Public's going to weigh in.
Is there anyone in the public who cares to comment on this? Thank you. I thought we'd have streams of folks just ready to go. No one's owed money. It must not be any of you. All right. How about online? Is there anyone online? Any hands from the online group? We will recognize you and allow you the opportunity to speak. Seeing none, we can move forward.
Okay.
Counselor Peak.
I would move that we adopt Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 200A, Section 9, is amended by Section 65 of Chapter 188 of the Acts of 2010, alternative procedure for managing abandoned funds, unclaimed checks, or tailings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt a chapter enabling us to move forward with an alternative procedure for managing abandoned funds? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, this one, I'm sure everyone's going to have comments on, so we're prepared.
Okay, so, this is a supplemental appropriation of $85 for a veteran's dental bill. So, basically, if you're just checking in on this, if, when, when the city has to pay an expense that occurred in a prior fiscal year out of funds that were budgeted
out of funds that were budgeted for this fiscal year, they need to go to the city council for an appropriation to sign off on doing this. Usually when this happens, it's particularly, it's usually in the first half of the fiscal year and it's usually because a bill came in late or there was some miscommunication. And as a result, something was not paid in the year in which it occurred. So that is what is going on here. It's an appropriation for a fiscal year 25 dental bill that we'd be paying using fiscal year 26 funds. The expenditure has already been approved for 75% reimbursement for the state. So it's just $85. This is probably the least controversial thing I've voted on in my time as city councillor. So, yeah.
And we are required to deal with it. So any of the counselors have any questions or comments? Anyone from the public here have any questions? This is your public hearing time to speak up. I'm seeing none. About anyone online? Again, no one. I see no one. This matter may proceed.
All right. Request is hereby made for the approval, for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $85 to be transferred from account number 001.5440.5772. $85 to be transferred to the same account, $85. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. The appropriation will be used to pay an FY25 dental bill for a Chapter 115 benefit recipient using FY26 Chapter 115 funds. The expenditure has already been approved for 75% reimbursement by the state.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. I will say to the public, it doesn't matter the dollar amount. This is the, so I hope we can keep everyone awake through this. So that's why it's important that we deal with it. Is there any other questions from the counselors? Excellent. I will call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion passes. I'll take a motion to close the public hearings.
Second.
Motion in a second to close the public hearings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We return now to public speak time. Again, to review, two minutes per individual. Anyone who'd like to come to the podium and speak your mind? This is the time to do so. We ask you to identify yourselves and again, we do not comment directly back, but we will be in contact and please feel free to contact me at 413-575-6009 should there be any issues that you would like resolved or contact the clerk or any of the counselors. Next in line?
Nathan Markey, 37 Holyoke Street. I'm a city councilor elect. Before I go into my statement, I do want to say that I'll be speaking about the elimination of the executive assistant role at the mayor's office. I do want to say that I believe that the mayor should have his own team, should have people that he's comfortable with, but I think that it's too abrupt and I think there should be a solid transition period. Let me flip my paper. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I want to address the significant concerns that have arisen regarding the mayor's recent administrative restructuring. I'm specifically referring to the decision to reduce the critical executive assistant role to a more generalized administrative title. This decision has implications that go far beyond a simple title change and we need to discuss them openly. My first concern is the optics and timing. We campaigned on a promise of unity and a commitment to working together for the future of our city. To, to have one of the first major actions of this administration is to be a change targeting a role held by a recent political opponent and to do so without public justification inevitably raises questions of political motivation. At this critical juncture, we must prioritize building trust and not creating division. Secondly, we face a potential loss of institutional knowledge. The executive assistant position is frequently the repository for complex unwritten processes and historical contexts. The necessary knowledge that ensures consistent, effective city operation from grant management to interdepartmental coordination. Downgrading this role without a systematic plan for retaining and documenting that vital expertise is not streamlining. It's a risky decision that unnecessarily jeopardizes the seamless functioning of our municipal services. Its potential impact needs to be fully justified to the taxpayers. Finally, I can add.
Please finish your thoughts.
Okay. Finally, I raise the point of understanding regarding the executive office itself. While the mayor served admirably on city council, the responsibilities of the chief executive are fundamentally different. This action suggests a substantial misunderstanding of the highly specialized, complex support needed to manage a city of this magnitude. We need assurance from the mayor that fully appreciates this expertise as, that has just been removed from the core of its operations.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is C. Baxter Chandler. I live at 209 Main Street. I want to express my disappointment and concern over Mayor Derby's decision to cut the salary hours and eventually eliminate the position of executive assistant position currently held by Lindsay Sukula. I feel like this is a short-sighted, ill-informed and ill-timed decision by a first-time mayor. It ignores the complexity of the office and the needs of East Hampton, East Hampton government. The argument that this is a common practice of new leadership coming in and making significant changes really falls flat with me. I've worked 25, 30 years in administrative and program director positions, watching new leaders come and go, and the best new leaders that came in would come in, get a sense of what needed to be done, took the time and thoughtful, put some thought into making changes. I respect that Mayor Derby has been serving as intra-mayor, but this has at best been part-time and it's been with Lindsay Sukula in the position of executive assistant. So I'm really concerned that he will become overburdened by the tasks of the executive position. And please note that this is coming from someone who overfunctions in this job that I have attempted and failed to do similar things, take on tasks that I could have delegated to other people. So I understand that drive, but it's taken me a long time to understand the importance of trusting other people.
You have 30 seconds.
The timing and the specific nature of this elimination is also worrisome. Approximately one week after he wins an active election, the mayor decides to eliminate the position held by a former political rival, a woman who has held this position for years and by all reports has done a good job. Really urge the council to consider this. I understand that you don't have regulation over the position changes like this, but you can make a motion to disapprove of the decision. I urge you to do so. Thank you.
Seth Durant, 49 Campbell Drive. I'm a high school senior and it's my first time voting in elections. So I'm just sort of, I'd like to concur with the three previous statements, the future of elect Kayam and the others, and of course Nathan Markey and really what I'm trying to say here is
Take your time.
Sorry, it's my first time doing whatever doing this.
You're doing great.
I guess I'm more afraid of the checks and balances angle here. I, I get between you, that he won a popular mandate, but it was so early that it was, because he got sworn in today. This occurred before that even happened, which is, was when he was acting mayor, which I think it would have made more sense to, to at least by the very minimum, wait until he was sworn, until being sworn in to consider any proposal like this. And I felt there should have been more, the ability of the public to weigh in before making such a, which I think was, to use harsh terms, rash and a little short-sighted personally because I feel we, Sukula has had seven years of experience in the office and though, though obviously we all know Derby's had 20 years of experience as a city councillor, I think it's a good idea to work together in these divided times instead of, instead of burning bridges. And I, I feel that's, that's my biggest fear is this is burning a bridge with a potential, the two, I see that the two of them is much more similar than different and I think this is burning a bridge that we don't need in this city, especially as, as I, I just feel they could work together much better as he's, as eliminating the position in the way is not nearly, in my opinion, the best move. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, I would ask everyone to refrain from applause or any other.
Okay. Hi, I'm Bonnie Lambeth, 117 Cottage Street, Big Dragon House. Okay, so I've been an East Hampton citizen since 2020. In 2022, I began volunteering in Brookside Cemetery of unearthing graves that have been sunken in to the point where you can't see them and helping on just like older cemeteries. Sometimes they need a little help just to keep them, you know, in good condition enough. I sought former mayor Nicole Chappell's permission to do it. I even posted my work on a social media page called Imger, developed a website, had a whole following for it. Everyone loved the posts that I was sharing. I loved doing it. I took pride in it. And the other day, I had to tell my followers that I'm retiring. And the reason that I'm retiring has to do with the way that Salem conducts himself as mayor. I'm not working on city property without the permission of the current mayor. I think that that's just a terrible idea. To keep comfortably working in the cemetery, I would have to ask him for permission and I don't trust him. Word around town is that he promised to endorse someone during the election, then ran for mayor himself. I normally don't trust the reliability of the rumor mill, but the quality and quantity of people who told me this makes me believe it, especially since he didn't start out running for mayor. In the end, he won fair and square, but I'm taking his actions while trying to be mayor into considerations because of his behavior as acting mayor, not even, he was only sworn in today. So this was unofficial mayor. I'm raising an eyebrow at the fact that he restored all the jobs that the previous mayor had cut and then simply removed the career of a former competitor. He cut her yearly salary from $92,000 to $56,000 a year. That is a massive decrease of $36,000.
15 seconds.
What?
15 seconds.
Okay. He said, and I quote, "I don't need a high-level assistant that is getting paid more than the mayor." And I have a question about that because he's supposed to serve the city and he has trivialized this into, what can she do for me?
Thank you.
Roger Anderson, 50 West View Terrace. Of this topic, it's been a discussion tonight. I just wanted to put in the context of my understanding of it. I remember in 2018 when this new position was proposed by then Mayor LaChapelle, to me it seemed kind of nonsensical that the city this size, the mayor would need a co-mayor essentially that was paid the same amount. In 2018, it wasn't approved. I was glad. In 2022, it was proposed again and approved at that point. And so this current move really is just returning the city to where it was in the previous three mayors. The previous three mayors felt they were able to do the job they were elected for without an equally paid assistant and they did it very successfully. So it makes sense to me that the current mayor would be able to do that too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Miriam Ansara, 359 Main Street, Unit 2A. I think what the previous speaker said is quite important. And I hadn't thought about that, but I am thinking about the following. First of all, I'm thinking that I don't really get the whole story here. And I don't get the timing of it. So what I actually think is that I had a hard time deciding who I would put number one and number two among Lindsay and Salem. And I think Lindsay is wasted in the position of executive assistant. And I would be surprised if I were to hear that that's where she wanted to continue. I'm assuming that her preference is to go on to be a city manager or town manager someplace else, using the skills and the experience that she's had for the last seven years. So what I'm feeling is that at the beginning of this new governance structure that we have of mayor and counselors, that we're getting off to a start where it's all tied up in personalities and how things were done, what things were done, I have only to go by a newspaper story and rumors. And I don't like that. I think that, number one, I'm surprised that we would need a co-mayor. I would prefer if Lindsay chose to stay until maybe January where everything starts again. I don't know what's going on behind the scenes. I don't know that it's actually relevant. What I think is most relevant is that somebody supremely qualified did not get elected in the city for mayor and should go on to all successes someplace else and we should be wishing her that good speed. And wishing good speed to our new mayor and our new council that's coming in. And just go on with life.
Thank you. Not seeing anyone else here? How about online? Any commenters online? Anyone care to join the public speak time? Please raise your hand. I see Janet. I would ask you to unmute yourself, Janet. And you would have up to two minutes. Janet, can you hear me? We cannot hear you.
How about now?
How about now? That sounds good. We'll start your time. You have up to two minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity.
A little louder, please. A little louder.
Oh, okay.
If you can speak right to the microphone.
Okay, how about this?
That's much better. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I am very disappointed in the approach the new mayor is taking. While I do believe he is passionately committed to the city's future, it bothers me that Lindsay Sukula's skills, experience, knowledge and relationships are being minimized and not fully acknowledged. These are assets that serve our city well. While I have no criticism of the mayor's wish to make adjustments to the weekly work schedule, responsibilities and salary, it is short-sighted and demonstrates an unwillingness to negotiate something for the good of East Hampton. I had hoped for a team of rivals approach going forward. Thank you.
Janet, before you break, would you mind just telling us your address and
Yes, Janet Mazzie, 3 Alden Street.
Thank you. Julie, you may unmute yourself and begin.
Hi, Julie in Precinct 1 on Concord Drive in East Hampton. I think that what Salem Derby did, Mayor Derby did, is a good move for East Hampton. The previous mayors prior to Mayor LaChappelle did not need an assistant. Mayor LaChappelle chose this on her own abilities. His abilities are different. He is pulling in the responsibilities back to the mayor's office. That's where it's at with him. If it's his decision that it's not needed and that he needs to do a realignment, that is his choice. He is the mayor. That is what he does to be fiscal responsible. It would be abuse to keep somebody who felt entitled to be in a position when it's not needed. He's making the right decision. Unfortunately, it happens. It happens in corporate world. It happens in private sectors. It happens in our federal government. It happens and it sucks. But it is what it is and it's best for East Hampton. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the online group? Please raise your hand to be acknowledged. Not seeing anyone else? Anyone here? Going once, going twice? Public hearings are now, or public meetings, rather. Public speak time is now closed for the evening. We will proceed with our agenda and we have items for immediate actions. A resolution in support of workers' collective bargaining rights. Brought to us by Counselor Peak, Counselor Denham and Counselor Jazak, I believe. No?
Smith.
Counselor Smith, my apologies. Who wants to speak to the matter?
I can take it.
Tom, Counselor Peak, please do it.
Yes, thank you. So, yes, I was approached by a group of labor organizers earlier this year who were interested in a resolution of this sort. When you're trying to do union organizing, there's going to be a lot of potential efforts put in place to prevent that sort of organizing. And they're feeling, I think, and they'll have an opportunity to say it better than I, but that was that just an affirmation from the city that we value and respect and honor the ability of workers to organize and collectively bargain would be something that would help workers feel more comfortable organizing and taking those sorts of actions, knowing that the city council has made a statement that this is something that we value and that we support. So I think that's the short of it. I imagine I'll probably read it at the end, but I imagine that some of the organizers themselves will want to speak and.
That's not typically.
No, we read it first?
No.
They only speak during public.
They only speak during public speak.
Even if it's an item for immediate action?
Yeah, even though it's an item for immediate action.
I thought we.
There was, there was, there was public speak.
We just amended it or got moved up in the agenda?
I misunderstood that. Is it possible we could reopen public speak then? Because I think I gave some people some bad advice.
Can I, a point of clarification?
Please clarify.
Can I, can I make a motion to suspend the rules to allow for those individuals to speak?
That was going to be my suggestion, that we have a motion to suspend the rules.
Yes.
So, you would speak to your request. This would allow everyone to go back and for the public to comment at this time regarding a specific matter.
So I'd like to second his motion to suspend.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion among councilors to suspend the rule? Seeing none, all those in favor of suspension.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The rules are suspended. The public may speak to the any, to the subject at hand, which is the matter of the workers' resolution, workers' collective bargaining rights. Please come to the podium. You'll have up to two minutes.
Democracy in action. We love to see it. And we're excited to speak. I'm Ian Petty. I live at 51 Taft Avenue. I'm an East Hampton resident and a member of the Northampton Association of School Employees. Last year, I was a member of the East Hampton Education Association as a paraeducator at East Hampton High School. I've also been a member of the National Association of Letter Carriers, and I've held many non-union jobs as well. And I cannot tell you how stark the difference is. My pay has always been better. My benefits have always been better in my union jobs. But even more than that, I think something that unions bring that is sometimes underappreciated, but at the heart of what it means to be in a union and what the importance of collective bargaining is, is its democratic nature. Unions are pretty much the only place that ordinary working people have a chance to get together, see what their common interests are, and work together to actually solve the problems that face them. That is exceedingly rare that working people have that power and chance to deliberate and exercise their power in our society. City government is maybe one other place where we get to do that, and we're doing that now in our civic capacity. But that social capacity to make real material differences to our pay, our working conditions, where we spend most of our waking lives, is just as critical. And as important as that is to our social lives and our democratic culture as a society, it is nonetheless opposed often by the people we work for. And so it is important that workers stand up and organize together. I'm excited that there are many unionized workers here and more unionized workers coming. But it also means that we have to have public support in the form of community members and our elected representatives. So I encourage you all to vote yes for this resolution, and I'm excited to hear from a fantastic gathering of the labor movement in East Hampton as we work to make this a city that works for working people.
Thank you. I ask you to please restrain from any applause.
Good evening, Councilpeople. Good evening, Mayor Derby. My name is Glenn Pettit. I've been a resident of East Hampton for about nine years now. I also work in East Hampton as a certified history teacher and as a paraeducator at the, at the high school. During my time as a member of the Mass Teachers Association, I've been able to move forward, knowing that I can continue to speak out and organize as I'm doing today, in the secure knowledge that I'm free from spurious accusations that have plagued so many colleagues, not so much in East Hampton, but in many other locales. And that is due to the ongoing vigilance and good faith efforts of the MTA here in East Hampton. I don't think I need to remind everybody here that collective bargaining and union membership in general is under attack at the highest levels of the country's national governance, and that union membership has been a key component that's enabled the creation and maintenance of an, up until recent, stable middle class. So I would really urge the council and the public here to, to support our resolution here tonight. And as, as the son of union educators from Long Island, I would appreciate your support for this matter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just so everyone, so everyone who is speaking knows, I've asked Mary Ann to notify and call out at 30 seconds, so you'll know how much time is left.
Okay, great. Hi, my name's Ben Par. I live on 47 Holyoke Street here in town. I also work at the East Hampton Public Library. My current workplace is not unionized, but I should say I've never felt a greater sense of solidarity, support, dignity, and purpose in the workplace as I felt when my former union went on strike to demand better pay and a more sustainable contract. As this resolution notes, and as other speakers have noted, the ability of workers to freely assemble and negotiate for fair treatment is not only fundamental to their own well-being, but also foundational to civic and communal life and to the rights we all enjoy, union member or not. Given that organized workplaces strengthen communal bonds and make our entire city more prosperous, the city should endeavor at every opportunity to support workers' rights to organize and negotiate unencumbered and to have workers' backs when they face retaliation for doing so. So I urge you to adopt this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, or evening, everybody in attendance and the city council. My name is Jacob Lor. I live on 139 Pleasant Street. I am a cultivation technician at INSA in the Mill Buildings on Pleasant Street, and I just wanted to announce at the beginning that as of November 9th, we are officially recognized as members of the UFCW Local 1459. I was raised and have lived in East Hampton all of my life. I attended and graduated from East Hampton schools. I'd very much like to continue living in the city, but as the years go on, I've been finding that increasingly harder to afford. Unfortunately, my recognized status as a fast and efficient worker has not changed the reality that my current pay at $17 an hour is far less than most of my coworkers, even though I've been with the company nearly two years. So I've come before you today to ask that, as a city, we stand together in favor of equality, fair wages, and collective bargaining. I found a career that I can take pride in and be passionate about, but I fear that unless my company agrees to offer a fair wage, I may have to look for new work in a new city. And as a single adult with no children living in East Hampton, a study performed by MIT puts the base living wage for someone like myself to be approximately 25 an hour. At more than 20% below this figure currently is my average rate of pay in East Hampton and feels similar to my own. And I feel confident that support from my city council will give me and my coworkers at INSA additional assurance.
30 seconds remain.
That both the community and our elected officials are behind us as we negotiate our first union contract. So I ask you please to make East Hampton a place where every member of the community can continue to not just live, but flourish. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jason Rodriguez. My address is 40 Brightside Drive. I live in Holyoke, but I live, but I work in East Hampton. I hope to move here at some point because I am growing to love this city. And that's why I'm here today, because I'm growing to love this city. I think that it is extremely important for us to continue having the right to unionize and bargain for our contracts. Why do I believe this? Because I believe that these rights we have are not privileges. They are principles. They're principles that are even deeply rooted in the foundation of our great nation. And if we do not allow ourselves the opportunity to get together and discuss essential matters that are needed to discuss to allow our districts to function properly, then why are we even here today? What's the point of electing officials? What's the point of having councilmen and women if we don't have the opportunity to come together and discuss properly in a civilized manner? And so I'm asking everyone here today to please support this resolution for us to continue the, the right and the principle of being able to bargain and unionize, so that way we can continue our jobs, we can receive the pay that we deserve, and we can give these kids a brighter future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Florence. I live at 35 Main Street. I've lived in East Hampton for 10 years now. For the last five years, I've been a cultivation technician at INSA. I would like to echo the words of my coworker. We recently formed a union in the cultivation department at INSA, and having the support of city councilors as we begin our first contract negotiations with the company would be a huge source of support for me and my coworkers. Specifically, with health insurance costs constantly rising, having the option of the union-provided insurance would go a long way towards expanding the quality of our healthcare. About seven years ago, I had a heart attack. At the time, I was lucky to have excellent health insurance. But right now, the insurance that my company offers does not meet the same standards that I previously had. Recent changes to our insurance policies may leave me with unaffordable or inadequate healthcare. Our right to collectively bargain provides us with another avenue for coverage that is more affordable and provides better overall coverage. With the support of the city council passing the collective bargaining resolution, my coworkers and I will have the additional confidence we need to negotiate with our company. With the existence, with existing support from the community, we can be sure that INSA workers are a valued part of our city. On behalf of myself, my coworkers, and the community members here today, we urge that the city council pass the collective bargaining rights resolution.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ruth Jensen, 28 East Maple Street, and I'm humbled to follow these worker organizers. Today, I'm, I'm going to speak as a member of the Executive Board of the Western Mass Area Labor Federation. I've been a resident of East Hampton for 20 years, and I've been a union educator for 30 years, and I'm a proud MTA member. Here in East Hampton, I also occupy the labor seat on the Housing Authority, and I rise in strong support of the resolution reaffirming our city's support for workers' collective bargaining rights. From the early days of the pandemic to our present day, workers have been taking action in record numbers, organizing together to build power. In Massachusetts, established unions in education and healthcare have been organizing to defend workers' quality of life and democratic rights in the workplace. Workers in smaller and non-traditional shops are organizing, too, from Trans Health in Northampton to Smith, Smith College preschool educators, to Hadley, Barnes &amp; Noble workers, to Starbucks in Northampton and Westfield, to cannabis production facilities in East Hampton. Across our towns, workers engaging in this brave new organizing require and deserve our support and solidarity. Unions form the basis, the social and economic basis of East Hampton, bringing higher wages and benefits, safety on the job, healthcare, and pensions. East Hampton workers are fighting once again for power and democracy on the job. And if the past is any guide, it is likely workers in this city will anchor the region's labor movement. This resolution will broadcast the message that our city and its elected leaders are in full support of workers' concerted efforts to collectively bargain in their own interests. The Western Mass Area Labor Federation believes in the expansion of democracy into our workplaces. When workers bring their expertise, experience, and voices to organize together, East Hampton prospers. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Still operating under the suspension of rules, we will open this up to anyone online. Anyone online, you'll have up to two minutes. Please raise your hand, and we will call on you. I don't see anyone. Excellent. Thank you for the extra speak time and for the comments. Counselor Peak.
Sure, well.
Or any of the other councilors care to speak to the subject or read the resolution.
I will speak to this.
Counselor Smith, please.
I just wanted to thank everybody for their testimony in talking. I've been a union member since my grad students' day, days in my early twenties, and there are a lot of things in my life that I could not have done without the benefit of my union behind me, and I am in solidarity. I just wanted to say that.
Counselor Riley.
I also wanted to thank everybody for speaking tonight. The right to unionize and to have a fair and livable wage is not only something that everybody in our community deserves, but it's also a way to give back to so many immigrants that helped build East Hampton into the community that it is today. You know, I'm reminded of how impactful the Polish contributions were to our history and that we would not be here today if it weren't for the work that they did. I want to put a finer point on why I'm so enthusiastic to support this resolution, and that is to, to address the, the sort of capitalization of cannabis within the United States. Like many of my colleagues here and those of us in the room, we remember what it was like to live in a culture where the government criminalized and destroyed lives for people who were using cannabis. And moving towards medicinal cannabis and recreational cannabis was, was a way to rectify what had happened. And, you know, to, to know that there are employees that are working for organizations in the cannabis industry who are, who are getting caught up in the same patterns of capitalization and power and control when it comes to cannabis, to me feels like a potential that we are sliding back into the old ways of letting the government or letting people with money dictate what happens with cannabis and the people's lives that are impacted by cannabis. So, yes, all of the things that people have said before, but I would urge everybody to vote yes on this resolution to protect this industry that we allowed to flourish within our community. And we can't. And we can't allow just the people who own the industry to flourish. It has to be everybody. That, that's really all that I, I wanna say. Um, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Denham.
Thank you, Ms. Herta. I'll be brief. Um, you know, I'm enthusiastic, uh, to be able to support this. Uh, I've been a longtime union member. Um, I think in the last several years, our unions have been under assault and I'm very pleased that, um, people are fighting back. And I think our cities need to fight back, um, and push back against, um, I think the injustice that, uh, labor is seeing, uh, in terms of how they're being treated. Um, so I also encourage anyone and everyone to, to support this and, um, I, I enthusiastically support your efforts to, to unionize within the city. So I appreciate all of you for, for being here today.
Thank you. Counselor Peak.
Sure, uh, I'm ready to read this if nobody else has anything, but I have a couple of things first.
Please do, because I would like to-
Oh, okay, cool. So first of all, um, to the, uh, the, the Insa folks in the room, I just wanna say congratulations. Um, as a member of, uh, MTA PSU, I am, I'm proud to call you my union brothers and sisters. So thank you, um, for all your work on that. I became a union worker in twenty-twenty for the first time. I work in research and consulting, so I never thought I would find myself in that place. But I ended up working, uh, getting a job at a university. And then that particular thing got, my research unit got transferred from the UMass President's Office to UMass Amherst. So I became, uh, a union member and in the same union as, as Counselor, uh, Denham. So, um, I wasn't, uh, I, I've always supported unions, but I wasn't sure what that was gonna mean for my workplace. And what I really found was that, um, it's been an incredible experience and my work, uh, I think runs better than ever because people feel safe in a way that they didn't before to speak up. And so there's things in projects where you might get a, a, a younger, newer person who feels comfortable saying, "Are, are you sure we wanna run it that way?" Because they're not worried about getting, not that anyone in my office would retaliate against you, but like they don't know that. They just got here. And so like, I think that there is like people, there's a more frank, uh, more comfortable flow of communication. And I really do believe that leads to better, uh, outputs. So, uh, I feel really good about that. Um, the other reason why I, I really, I've come to really enjoy this, over the last few years, is the more that I've realized that a big part of what union's about is about democracy at work. You know, and we talk a lot about democracy since it's under the constant attack at the federal level. Um, since at the state level, they don't always live up to what I'd like to see them do in terms of honoring it. And everyone here who's in this meeting knows that democracy isn't just showing up every four years to vote for a, the president, you know? Like it's, it's also about, you know, what you do at your, your state level and, and at your local level. But how, how can we really expect a culture of democracy to flourish in a meaningful way? When so many people spend a third of their lives in a, in a, in workplaces where there is no democracy, where it's completely, there, there's, there's no, there's, you have no rights, you have no, um, there's no rules about how these things work. There is no collective bargaining. It's you, you're here at the pleasure of your boss until you're not. And, and I think that, um, I, I think that the more people that we have, uh, finding themselves not in those sorts of environments, the, the more, I think that there, there is a, a strong relationship between the strength of labor and the strength of democracy. So when we're at this place right now as a country that I think many in this room would agree is kinda scary, I really see standing with labor and making it clear that as local government, we support labor. I see that as an important step to take. So that's why I put this forward despite my generally not particularly caring for resolutions. Um, and, um, and, uh, a- and, and thanks to everyone who, who brought this forward. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll be brief in my comments. Uh, I, uh, come from a union family. My family did, did better because dad worked for, uh, a company that, uh, was originally called Fisk and then became, uh, Uniroil over in Chicopee. It was a big plant. They had seventeen hundred employees and each employee was a cog except there was a union. There was a union. And that enabled a decent level of, uh, of pay. And it enabled for a decent healthcare policy for everyone in our family. As I grew a little older and got a little bit more mature, I really began to appreciate those benefits. I'll say right now, I wish that we weren't dependent on union contracts to help us negotiate for our healthcare. I wish no one would be wondering whether or not they had the right to be able to get good healthcare. Everyone deserves that. I'm thrilled every time I hear that there's another union being formed and there's another approval. So thank you for sharing your recent experiences. I think by working together with employer, with employers, everybody together can raise and move forward. That's my hope. That's my goal. Thank you. Not seeing any other comments? I would ask for the reading of the motion.
All right. I've been known to trip over my words with these long ones.
Anyone else want to?
I, I, I know, I'll do, I'll do my best. Um-
I offered.
Would you like to? Okay. East Hampton City Council Resolution in Support of Workers' Collective Bargaining Rights. The East Hampton City Council recognizes the historic role of labor unions in our city's workplaces and communities. Uh, free association of people is a fundamental right enjoyed by all citizens of East Hampton. Free association guarantees the right of working people to choose whether or not they will collectively bargain with their employer. Uh, through collective bargaining, workers reach a written agreement with employers guaranteeing rates of pay, wages, hours of employment and other working conditions. Whereas the cost of living continues to rise year after year, impacting all basic household expenses, including but not limited to the cost of groceries, housing, utilities and healthcare. And whereas the Massachusetts Institute of Technology calculates a living wage for a single adult with no children in East Hampton of twenty-four fifty-nine per hour. However, in May twenty-twenty-four, the Bureau of Labor Statik- Statistics, uh, recorded the mean regional hourly wage at, as nineteen fifty-eight for manufacturing workers and fif- nineteen fifty-four for farm workers and laborers. And whereas, uh, union workers enjoy higher wages and better working conditions than their non-union counterparts. Union workers make an average of fifteen percent more than non-union workers and have the protections of just cause provisions and recourse for unfair treatment. And whereas more prosperous working residents benefit our community through reinvesting their incomes in local businesses, schools and services. And whereas, unionized workers are important and valued, uh, are, are an important and valued section of the community. Uh, when people, uh, when working people in our community engage in workplace democracy through their unions, they participate in the civic life of the community. And whereas, freedom of association is a fundamental human right and working people must be able to exercise this right in the absence of pressure from their employers, uh, whether implicit or explicit, in the forms of coercion, threats, interrogation, promises or spying. Thus, the right for employees to petition for membership in a labor organization of their choosing must not be hindered uh, by conditions that would deter free and fair choice. And whereas, uh, union busting prevents free and fair association of employees and East Hampton workers may, uh, encounter retaliation from their employers in the form of tactics that violate the spirit of labor laws, if not the letter of the laws. And whereas, the rights of employees to organize and bargain collectively are naturally bound to the social and economic justice to, or sorry, to social and economic justice. And the city, uh, council has demonstrated its commitment to social, uh, and economic justice in recent resolutions, including an act enabling cities and towns to stabilize, uh, rents and protect tenants. And East Hampton City Council Resolution in Support of the TNGDI Community. And therefore, be it resolved, uh, the East Hampton City Council shall utilize its authority to assist in upholding uh, both the letter and the spirit of laws directing employees' rights to organize and collectively bargain with employees, employers. Therefore, be it further resolved, the East Hampton City Council affirms workers' rights, our human rights and, uh, should said rights be jeopardized in fact or in spirit, uh, supports a policy of employer neutra- neutrality in instances of workers seeking, uh, to engage in legitimate forms of, uh, concerted activity. Uh, be it further resolved, that the clerk of the city council shall cause this resolution to be submitted to US Senator Elizabeth Warren, US Senator Edward Markey, State Representative Omar Gomez, uh, Sen- uh, State Senator, uh, John Velas, uh, Governor Mara Healy and Attorney General Andrea Joy Campbell.
Second. Motion and a second on the East Hampton City Council Resolution in Support of Workers' Collective Bargaining Rights. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you. Moving on to our next order of business. If anyone needs to leave right now, that's fine. I know you came for certain, certain- But if you, yeah. Thank you. And then we'll be able to move on. If you could carry your conversations out in the wayback, that would be appreciated. Communications from elected officials, boards and commissions. Anyone here on the council have any communications? Take care to share. Counselor Denham.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the Municipal Leadership Academy, the applications are open. So if you are interested in participating, um, in, in the academy, it's a nine-week program. Uh, it's a great opportunity to meet with department heads. Uh, you have the opportunity with the mayor. Um, and, um, learn about the various, uh, operations within the city. Um, there'll be opportunities to tour various facilities, um, and just a general, uh, opportunity to, to be able to ask questions and, and learn about the city budget. So, uh, I encourage anybody and everybody to, uh, participate in that. Uh, it's also a great opportunity, um, when you are thinking about how to get involved in the city. If you wanna participate in a, um, city committee, commission, uh, advisory board, et cetera. It's a, it's a great way to learn about, um, kind of how the city functions and operates. So it's a great stepping stone into being able to do that. So you can go to the city website, uh, for that, uh, under vacancies, uh, under, um, there's, if you just, if you just search for Municipal Leadership Academy, it'll be, take you there for information about that. And you can also, um, apply online.
Can't endorse it any higher. Please do attend. Anyone else? Okay, uh, moving on, there's no correspondence. President, communications. I wanted to say, uh, a few things about, uh, what is going on in East Hampton to help bridge the gap between this group and that group. And in case anyone's noticed, there tends to often be silos and patterns and people aren't talking to one another. And our job is to bridge that gap here. But I wanna do a shout out to two other counselors who attended a session this past weekend. And particularly to the counselor who invited everyone to this. Counselor Jonathan Schmidt, the new counselor, Jonathan Schmidt, uh, had introduced a opportunity to talk to a group and be part of a group. And Counselor Denham and I joined that. I didn't see any other counselors who were available to do it at that time. But this is open to the public and to everyone in the community. That's called the Braver Angels. Their mission is to bridge the gaps and to allow groups to speak with one another. Not to point fingers and accuse, but to really listen and learn from one another, to develop the skills. And so I wanted to point it out, Braver Angels is the group. Uh, they are meeting every once in a while. There's, uh, other, other meetings. I would look them up online and ask you to, uh, you call one of us. It took place at the library annex. They're free and open to the public with the goal of helping to bridge the communication gaps and help people develop better skills. I would encourage everyone to participate. And I thank you again, Counselor Schmidt, for bringing it to our attention. That being said, Mayor Communications.
Well, I thank you. So I, I just have a couple of things. I'll, I'll keep it brief. So one of the exciting things that happened last week was, um, got to go to Boston to the State House with Counselor Peak and Representative Omar Gomez, um, to speak on our, um, petition, the Bill H eight thirty-five, um, which we put forward to, uh, allow ranked choice voting to be used in our multi-member, uh, body elections. Um, I felt like we got a good reception, um, from the joint committee. Uh, and we also, I think, we also spoke in favor of a broader, um, bill to allow ranked choice voting to happen in, around the state. You know, this is something that's been stalled in a lot of communities. Um, and as we just saw, it allows for the greater extra, uh, I'm not gonna say exorcism, but the, the greater exercise of democracy. Um, and, and so that was a really great experience. Um, and, and I think that ranked choice voting, uh, we showed it can be effective and it can work. Um, uh, and I also wanted to, uh, talk about, uh, I was able to attend, um, the Office of Fair Housing, um, their regional listening session that was in Springfield on Monday. Uh, it was a really, uh, enlightening session, um, talking about some of the housing discrimination and also the housing issues that have been happening around the state, around the country. Um, with rents, um, being, you know, jacked up significantly by out-of-town landlords, um, by the, the treatment of, of people that are in these housing, um, units. And, uh, it was, it was really eye-opening. And it was great as a municipal leader to be there to look at how we can, um, A, encourage more fair housing in our city, but also encourage the development of more types of housing that can help kind of alleviate some of these things. So that was, um, really great. And then finally, um, one of the things that I've been updating you on happened. And it happened on Monday when I got back, um, from Springfield. Uh, myself, um, Dennis Grubner and Chad Alexander, uh, walked from City Hall to the East Hampton Community Center. And we delivered, um, I delivered, uh, a check for two thousand dollars to Robin Beleki, uh, to provide direct meal assistance to residents. Um, and the East Hampton Police Association, um, and the East Hampton, um, uh, I wanna say Veterans Flag Association donated two thousand dollars to match. Um, and so we were able to deliver four thousand dollars to Robin on Monday, um, right before the holidays. Um, she had just said that she had spent twenty thousand dollars on turkeys, um, and she had already given out a hundred and forty. Um, so, you know, this actually is really great because what it does, it'll, it sets a precedent that has not been set in East Hampton before, which is figuring out a way to provide direct material support to the East Hampton Community Center through a contract, um, for them to provide food assistance to the people that go there. And that is something that's really exciting because it's, it hasn't been done yet. And it, and we were told that it couldn't be done because of the anti-ilate amendment. But what we did was we contracted with them and that changed everything. Um, and so I'm, I'm really excited about that and I'm really excited, um, about the fact that we were able to use ARPA funds. Um, because ARPA funds, when they generate interest, that money is still restricted in the same way that ARPA funds are restricted. All of our ARPA funds are, are dedicated to things that, that they've already been spoken for. So we can't use our ARPA money, but we used interest for this. Um, and so that was really exciting, kind of creative way to get around it. So, um, and I, I think the last thing I'll say is I know that there was some talk about the restructuring of my office. And since it's a personnel matter, I, you know, I'm not gonna get deep into it, but I would, um, love to talk to anybody individually, um, if they have any questions around that, um, and to explain my rationale. And, um, you know, because I think that that is important for people to understand, but because it's a personnel issue, I, I don't feel it's appropriate to talk about it, um, in, in this forum. Um, and I would especially encourage, uh- And I would especially encourage, you know, counselors who elect, you know, to open those lines of communication. I think that's really what's important, is to, you know, understand where people are coming from and to open those lines of communication before we, you know, cast the first stone. So I just want to say that, and I want to thank you for your time, and I hope you have a beautiful evening. Thank you.
Any questions for the mayor? Any? Nope. Saying none, thank you, Mayor. We appreciate your efforts and are especially pleased to hear about the creative way of working with the community center. The contracts do wonders and enable the anti-aid amendment to not be violated and yet to be able to serve the public. So kudos to you on that. Thank you. Standing Committee reports. Finance. Counselor Peak.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we had, I think, the shortest finance meeting of all time. I don't know we'll ever beat it, actually, to, last week, to talk about this Veterans Dental bill. So right now, I think we... The only thing that... There's no new business for us, or oh, there is. So I'll... In that case, I'm mistaken. So we will be meeting at our usual time.
Want to announce the time?
That's Wednesday at 5:30 in Conference Room 1.
The day before, thanks.
Yes.
The day before, thanks.
What do you guys think? I'm in town.
Might want to reconsider.
Jonathan, you're the new finance person.
The mayor's closing City Hall at 5:00. That's noon on Wednesday.
We haven't announced yet.
So if any public wants to attend, the building will be closed.
Right. Building, so Friday it'll be closed, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
I am available.
If we met...
We can do a hybrid, right? I don't want to... I know this is something that's important to John Mason, and I don't know what the rest of our weeks are going to look like.
I'm fine coming in person. I think that we can let people in.
Sure.
If they need to be let in, and it can be hybrid as well, so if there's people who only want to show up online, that's fine as well.
Yeah, okay, that works for me. So yeah, that's the plan. And we'll be discussing that. The one other thing, there was a little bit of a miscommunication, so this should have been something that I handled last time. I'd like to set a public hearing at this time for our first meeting in December...
December 3rd.
December 3rd. At 6:15 in these chambers for the acceptance of the Land and Water Conservation Trust Grant for Nanituck Spray Park. That's just a resolution, but I think it does require a public hearing, is my understanding, and so I would like to set that at this time.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, set a public hearing on the acceptance of the Water and Land Conservation Trust Grant for Nanituck Spray Park for the December 3rd meeting here in these chambers at 6:15. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Counselor Peak. This concludes Finance. Thank you. Public Safety. Do we have a member of the Public Safety?
I am the only one, I think, that's left.
You're the only one here.
Public Safety has not met, I'm not sure when. It's been many months, so we will have to get new members added on.
I will make an announcement shortly on that.
Perfect, thank you. And then I know Counselor Terrell is the chair, he's not here, so I would defer any restructuring and scheduling to him if he will be attending the next few meetings.
He did notify us that he was unable to attend.
Okay, perfect.
This evening.
Yep, perfect, thank you.
There is a matter that expires on 12/2. I would ask...
Yes, so...
To get an extension?
Yes, I would like...
Roadway Infrastructure and Pedestrian Safety Items.
Yep, a 90-day extension for roadway infrastructure and pedestrian safety items in the form of motion, please.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second for a 90-day extension. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Appointments.
Mr. President, I'm so sorry. I just realized that there was something that should have been extended on my Finance agenda.
We'll entertain that.
So yeah, we had rescheduled this hearing until November, so...
Yeah, we would basically reschedule to February.
Yeah, but we never extended it.
I thought we extended to February.
To February, right.
February, right.
But we never formally extended it, so I would, I guess...
If you do 90 days, that should get us through.
Yes, that should do it. I'll make a motion to extend the City Council Action Request to Adopt Chapter 329, a 90-day extension on that item.
Second.
Motion and a second to extend the City Council Action Request adopting Chapter 329. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This is extended for 90 days.
And thus concludes for Public Safety.
Public Safety concludes appointments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. We met on Monday of this week to discuss several different city council appointments. Hold on, let me find them all. I have multiple windows open to do this, and of course, now it just went.
Of course, they go blind at the right moment, at the wrong moment.
So let me figure it out. Okay. Nope, it's the wrong one. Okay, got it. Nope, that's not it. Okay, got it.
Okay.
In the old days, we'd just shuffle papers, you know?
So we met on, like I said, we met on Monday at 6 o'clock, and we had several different appointees in front of us to discuss, and the first one I'm going to do separately because we need to have someone abstaining, but I would like to talk about the 9/11 Committee. The first appointee that I'd like to recommend for the full council to consider is Rebecca Bell with a term expiration of 12/31/26 for the 9/11 Committee.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept Rebecca Bell for the 9/11 Committee. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All abstained.
Oh, we have an abstention. My apologies. We have one abstention, Counselor Denham, I believe, right?
Correct. I am abstaining.
And I'd also...
I'd like to vote, but I won't.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to review Carolyn White for the 9/11 Committee with a term expiration of 12/31/26, and Mike Tausnick for the 9/11 Committee with a term expiration of 12/31/26. And I neglected to mention earlier that all three of these recommendations were voted 3-0 from the Appointment Subcommittee.
So then a second on the other two.
Okay, motion and a second for three appointments. Any discussion?
It's two appointments.
Two appointments, my apologies. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No extensions, I presume.
Okay, and...
Motion carries.
I'd also like to bring forth six appointments to the TNGI Committee with a term expiration of 12/31/28, and that's Mia Lorre, Keith Aaron, Hunter Fritag, Mona Huntley, Tyler Carson Eisenman, and Francis Scarsanase. I'm sorry, I said that wrong. Scarsanase. Skrinars, thank you, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second for the TNGI Committee Appointments. I just will speak to how fortunate we are that folks here in East Hampton will step forward for appointments in all committees and this new committee, so I'm very excited to be by it. And I know about the pronunciation, because I did speak with the person and clarified it. Counselor Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. So it would give me such incredible joy to vote yes on this motion because of how important my own queer identity is to myself and to advocate for transgender and queer people within our community. That being said, I have to recuse myself from the vote because I am the Chair of the Board of Directors at Tapestry Health, and one of those individuals is an employee, and I don't want to give the appearance that I am voting to grant them something with the similar roles that I play between two agencies. So I'm going to sit this vote out, but I am very proud that we have this committee being formed.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained. Counselor Riley abstained.
And our next meeting will be on Monday, December 1st, at 6 o'clock, to review the 18 reappointments that will be coming up in New Business, and thus concludes.
Thank you. Ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met on November 12th to discuss some last-minute amendments that the Fire Department proposed for the General Ordinance, and at that time, we had voted in support of that, although I think there are some kind of outstanding questions that maybe had regarding those amendments, but we will be having a public hearing on December 3rd at 6:15 in these chambers for both the General Ordinance as well as the zoning ordinance amendments that are related to the short-term rental as well. So there'll be both of those that we will have the public hearing for on December 3rd. Our next meeting will be December 18th at 6:00 PM in Conference Room B, and at that meeting, we will be talking about amend Exhibit A, classification of employees to add addition, add position of Public Safety Dispatch Director, and we will also be starting up our conversations again regarding the housing partnerships, zoning amendments that they have proposed. So we'll be talking about those items at that particular meeting. The committee also has, we need to extend the Ordinance Review Committee final report by 90 days, as, oh, actually, I'll take a motion to extend the Ordinance Review Committee final report by 90 days, as well as the review, request to review General Ordinance Amendments regarding short-term rentals by, I'm going to say 90 days, because I don't know what's going to happen at that next meeting, so I'll just say that.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to extend the deadlines for by 90 days on two matters, Ordinance Review Committee's final report and the request to review General Ordinance Amendments, Short-Term Rentals. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries.
And that's everything that our committee has to offer counsel this evening.
Thank you. Property, Counselor Peak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, property needs to meet, so I will be contacting the members of property, and we will be setting up a meeting because there's a couple of things, it's not a huge deal, but a couple of things we got to get squared away by the end of the year, probably.
Excellent.
And that concludes.
That concludes. I'll wait till the end of our reports to announce assignments of committees, rules in government relations. We don't have any report tonight. So now we get to the new appointments. Counselor Denham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to acknowledge that this evening, the Appointments Committee approved the 9/11 Committee, so I just want you all to know this is kind of a housekeeping thing, that I'll be reaching out to that committee to help them kind of schedule their first meeting so that that process can begin, so I just wanted you all to know that that step is being taken.
With the new councils, the new counselors, we have joining Finance Committee, Jonathan Schmidt, who will also serve on the Property Committee. Counselor Amanda Newton will serve on Rules and also on Public Safety. I will be moving off of Rules to make that accommodation so that we can do, I will retain the work on property and move to Ordinance in the interim. Okay? That being said...
Can I ask a point of clarification, please?
Please. So you now know who to contact for sure regarding all the committees? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I know that in the interim, there was a question of whether or not you, as the President of City Council, could serve in a chair capacity, and that question had evolved around the fact that Mayor Derby was then Acting Mayor Derby. So the question that I have for clarification is, going forward from today, does that mean that you can no longer serve as the Chair of a committee, or does that start effective January 1st?
That would start on January 1st, but we don't have any conflicts because I'm not on the Rules and Government Relations.
Oh, that was the one you were the Chair of.
That's the committee on which I was a Chair.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
So we don't have any questions...
Excellent.
...to deal with.
Yep, no clarification needed.
Thank you, Counselor Newton.
Thank you, understood.
But those are good questions. We appreciate that. Counselor Smith.
Okay. I'd like to make, oh, I just did it again. Hold on just a moment. I'm going to say it as one fell swoop. Yeah, don't worry.
Why, why?
Okay. I have quite a few positions that are going to be up for reappointment, and so I'm going to make a motion in the form of one large motion, and I just need to read all these names off and what their committee role will be and the term expiration, so bear with me.
Sounds good.
Okay. In the form of a motion, I would like to move the following names to the Appointment Subcommittee for consideration. Robert Newton for the Aquifer Protection Committee, which is a reappointment, term expiration 12/31/28. Jamie Paquette for the Bees Committee, reappointment 12/31/28. Genevieve Goldleaf, Bees Committee, reappointment 12/31/28. Gail Cannon, Charity Funds Committee, reappointment 12/31/28. Doug Peavy, Council on Aging, reappointment 12/31/28. Catherine Carey, Council on Aging, reappointment 12/31/28. Peter Follett, East Hampton City Arts, reappointment 12/31/28. Connie Dawson, Energy Advisory Committee, moved to full member, reappointment 12/31/28. Jamie Paquette for the Energy Advisory Committee, which is a reappointment, 12/31/28. Beverly Wadika for the Historical, I'm sorry, the Historical Commission, which is a reappointment for 12/31/28. Evan Garber for the Manhan Rail Trail Committee, reappointment 12/31/28. Robert Albertson, Manhan Rail Trail Committee, reappointment 12/31/28. Beth Tiffany, National Sonic Pond Committee, reappointment 12/31/28. Wendy Taylor Jordan, Planning Board, Associate, reappointment 12/31/28. Anthony Corella, Plumbing and Gas Inspector, reappointment 12/31/28. Leslie Button, Register of Voters, reappointment 12/31/28. James Johnson, Veterans Council, reappointment 12/31/28. And Richard Reese, Veterans Council, reappointment 12/31/28. And Richard Reese, Veterans Council, reappointment twelve thirty-one twenty-eight.
Second.
Motion in a second to move these appointments to the Appointments Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, councillor. Approval of the City Council twenty-twenty-six meeting calendar. I'd entertain a motion to move this to committee?
Still moved.
Second.
Any particular committee that you're thinking of? Were you thinking of that be sent to?
Rules?
Rules? That's what I was thinking. Excellent choice. So we have a motion on the table to move to Rules.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the acceptance of the park grant for the East Hampton All Wheels Park. You want to move that to?
Yes, I'd like a made a motion to move that to Finance and to schedule a public hearing for this item for December third at six fifteen in these chambers.
So two motions, one to move to Finance and a second one to hold.
I'll do that in a single motion.
So yeah, that, let's do.
If that's okay.
It's fine with me.
That's how we usually do it.
We have no objection? Okay. Good. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Motion to move to Finance and to hold a public hearing for December third. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We're not all having fun? All right. Listen, thank you very much, and once again, congratulations to the new councilors. Looking forward to working with you this year, this season. Thank you. Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is now closed.